It is.
Oh, oh, three.
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by remarks by Councilmember Ben Gray, who will be getting time from Councilmember Palermo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just wanted to take the time, and I don't see Dr. Thompson here yet, but I did want to take the opportunity to, last week, as many of you know, we held a commemorative service on behalf of Will Brown, an individual who was lynched in this town at the courthouse next door 100 years ago this past Saturday. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Thompson, Vicki Young, and all of the individuals who were involved in this project. Saturday and the rest of the events that took place came off very smoothly. They were very tastefully done, and there was also a reflection that we still have a ways to go in terms of race relations, and we need to get busy working on that. But I did want to take the opportunity to thank all of those who put together such a wonderful program last week. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Councilman Gray.
And Councilman Gray.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, and in order to facilitate the business of the people, we ask you to turn off or silence your phones at this time. Madam Clerk, before we begin with the agenda, we have some special guests here today with the State Department in a program that Councilmember Festerson would like to recognize.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize a number of young leaders we have here from Southeast Asia. They're here in Omaha studying city government and local government today. They asked some great questions when I spoke to them earlier today, and they've all been made honorary citizens of Omaha now, so wave and be recognized if you would.
All right. Welcome to Omaha. Madam Clerk.
Just really quick, an affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers. Item six, resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Copper Creek Replat 1 located southeast of 168th Street Military Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Vol, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the client. Probably most importantly, I need to say hi to my wife and my brand-new baby here watching the live stream. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have on the project.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven and eight can be considered together for property located at 4660 L Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven in ordinance to rezone this property from our 435 district to our 6th district. Item eight in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing on items seven and eight begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Joe Kaziski, 5808 M Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Welcome, Mr. Kaziski.
John Ackerman, 2117 South 34th Street, Omaha.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven and eight are approved, seven to zero. Item nine in ordinance to rezone property located at 1018 South 10th Street from HI District to CBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10 in ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district and an R7 district located southeast of 15th and Spring Streets, and to approve the development plan. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Be used communication and support.
The public hearing on item 10 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mike Golly, Holy Name Housing, 4324 Fort Street.
Welcome.
Mike Thompson, Aliquinum for Kettle Architecture, 1516 Cummings Street.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11 is the Furniture Row Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan, and there is a request from the applicant to postpone this item to the October 22, 2019 city council meeting.
And continue the public hearing, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
Before we have a vote, because we've published the opportunity for public hearing today, even though we will be continuing that if this motion passes to October 22, you do have the right to speak. Are there any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, there's a motion to lay this item over and continue the public hearing to October 22. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider a class dealer license for Maloney's located at 1830 North 72nd Street.
Public hearing on item 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Chris Falkenhayner, 8526 Evans Street.
Jordan Ellis, 7076 Spencer Street.
Happy to answer any questions?
Do you have questions for us, or are we asking questions? Who's starting the questioning?
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, seven to zero.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Item 13, an application to consider a class dealer license for Pacific Eating House located at 1130 Sterling Ridge Drive, Suite 101.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Darrell Ald, 2310 Placid Lake Drive, Papillion, Pacific Eating House.
And you're here and happy to answer any questions we might have, too, right?
Any questions.
There you go. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an application to consider a class dealer license for Culinary Kids located at 725 North 210th Street, Suite 210.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Lisa Kearns-Kahoe, 21410 Walnut Street, Oakland.
And?
Culinary Kids.
And?
Oh, I am here to answer any questions.
There you go. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, an application to consider a class dealer license for Law Esmeralda Package located at 3215 Q Street with a waiver of city council liquor rule seven.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Sam Gomez. My address, 3215 Q Street, Esmeralda. I apply to liquor license.
And my name is Enrique Brodsky, 2508 South 43rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, and I'm assisting Mr. Gomez with interpreting and the like, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Perfect. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
And just to be clear, this would be with a waiver?
Requires five votes, right?
No.
No?
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16, an application to consider a class dealer license for NP Mart 1 located at 5608 Ames Avenue.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hello, it's Rana Amzeh Nazir, my address is 16962 Polk Street, Omaha.
Welcome.
Ashad Nazir, I'm the owner of NP Mart. My address is 16962 Polk Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68135.
You're the seller, he's the buyer?
Yeah.
Is it the business and the property, or just the business?
No, actually, I own the NP Mart's is basically an expansion to the property, so he's going to be the manager on it, and since it's the same. And he's actually been operating as a business owner.
We'll get back to you with Q and A in a few minutes on questions, okay? Are there any other proponents? If you could have a seat, we'll now call for the opponents.
Good afternoon, Reverend Porsha Cavett, on behalf of Claire Memorial United Methodist Church, 5544 Ames Avenue. I come in opposition of this request. I had to rearrange my schedule. I'm due back in school at least by 3:30, but wanted to say that Claire Memorial United Methodist Church was not notified by the city per your law to tell us of this owner change. This also happened in 2017 when the name was changed, and we asked the neighbor to be, or we asked the owners to be a good neighbor. 10 days ago, I learned that Alpha Surveying was looking at the area for this property. They were on the church's property, marked it up. I'm not sure what they were surveying, but I did a little stakeout on Friday, hoping to see someone come through, and they came through on that day that we were setting up for the food pantry, that they are surveying because they want to add on or expand this business. And so when I looked at your agenda, I saw that you had them down for a owner change, and so that's what brings me out today. This organization has been there in 2017. Of December, you gave them a license to change the name of the business. In February of 2018, they failed the compliance check of selling to a minor. In March of 2019, they failed again selling to a minor. In August of 2019, they failed again selling to a minor. How many times have they been selling to a minor without that six months of checking? And so we are here today to say it is important for the community to be involved, and that's why we elect you as our city officials to represent, to help, and to protect the health and the safety of our community. In the midst of going before you and then going down to the Liquor Control Commission, the Liquor Control Commission tells me I have to come back to you. When I come to you, you still send forth liquor licenses you just sent forth through just as easy as it was just clay. All they had to do was say, "We want a license," and you submitted and let them go to the state. And so in the midst, there are three or four things that I want to ask. Are these two people related? You just heard them say that he's going to be managing the expansion, so why is there a change? So are they trying to get up under the law? They've already broken the law. We see that there's a loophole. If you change the owners of a location, then they are automatically grandfathered in to have a liquor license. We need to stop this foolishness that is going on and not allow this establishment to sell liquor. In this area, the alcohol density is already too many. I told you I'm the watchdog for 52nd to 60. I'm watching. And so we do not need another liquor establishment. There is one across the street. There is one two blocks away, and then they own the NP Mart on 60th and Northwest Street, which is right around the corner. We already have enough three to four liquor establishments within a 1.2 mile radius. The Liquor Control Commission has helped us. Tobacco Hut did not get their license that you gave them the okay here at this city council. We went all the way to Lincoln, and we were able to hold that and to deny that liquor license. I want to ask, is this a way around the penalties for a business? We need to look at and change the law if this is the case that is happening. We need to make sure that we're building up the neighborhood, and yes, this neighborhood is going through some positive changes. We're thankful for the new businesses and the city offices that are going in, but we want to make sure that we are not bringing in or adding to the problem in our community. This community is already inundated, so please hear from the rest of the community members. I just gave you the background, but I brought some backup this time so that you can see and hear and know what is happening in our area.
Thank you, Reverend Cavett. Are there any other opponents wishing to be heard?
Good afternoon, Chris Wagner, 11620 M Circle with Project Extra Mile. I want to echo the concerns of Reverend Cavett. We're certainly concerned about possible hidden ownership, although I feel like some of my testimony is moot now that he essentially said that he continues to be the owner despite the application indicating that Mr. Rana Nazir is 100% owner of this business. We're also concerned about, I think really what this boils down to is an attempt by the business to avoid responsibility for breaking the law. This business has violated selling alcohol to a minor three times in the last two years. The third violation just occurred in August. This application was filed less than a month later. So they had sales in February of 2018, November of 2018, and August of 2019. So before we even had the chance to send the paperwork down to Lincoln about this violation, that application to replace was already filed, and I think it really just boils down to a $400 application fee versus having to serve a 12-day mandatory closure of alcohol sales and a $4,000 fine. So I mean, I think it's pretty clear as to why this application to replace was filed. If they wanted to expand their operations at addition, I know the city council is aware, they can do that under their existing license. They do not need to file a new application. Aside from that, I wanted to note that in front of you, we did some looking at the licenses that are associated with Mr. Ashad Nazir, and I wanted just to note some suspicious similarities. The corporate address for all three of Mr. Nazir's licenses is listed as 16962 Polk Street in West Omaha, what appears to be a single-family residence owned by Mr. Nazir. The same address is on the application as the corporate address of the current applicant for Mr. Rana Nazir. The corporation names are all very similar. The applicant corporation is SM Petroleum LLC. Under Mr. Ashad Nazir, the corporation of the previous license was MS Petroleum LLC. The corporation of Mr. Ashad Nazir's other active licenses in the city of Omaha, Big Gyms Plus on 30th and Ames is Rana Petroleum LLC, noting the name is the same as the applicant's name. The corporation on NP Mart at North 160th is Rana Properties LLC. Furthermore, I would just note that there is no indication as to any updates on the other active licenses in the city of Omaha, which makes me think, well, why is this, why a sudden change at this location? And again, it brings me back to that third sale to minor within two years. So we would urge the council to oppose this urge to recommend denial for this license application. However, should the city decide to send this down with a recommendation for approval, we would simply ask that there a condition be added, that the license history of the previous business follow the new business. Regardless of what happens, that 12-days mandatory closure and 40-days of suspension, which essentially is a $4,000 fine, should they choose to pay it off as a fine, that goes away, no matter what. So that is what I had to say, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Lindemeyer. I'm a pastor. I'm in the wrong business because it seems like getting a liquor license is pretty easy, and that would pay a lot better, I think, than being a pastor. I'm 7020 Cash Street and a mother of two underage teenagers, and our community in La Vista, we lost four gals who were drinking. Don't know who sold them the alcohol, but I wonder if the money that was spent trying to do that investigation and for the reward was given to other places other than renewing these liquor licenses, what that would change our community for? And so I just would hope, as a mother, that we don't just stamp these liquor license like it was just stamping when you go into a basketball game or something, and that we really think about what we're doing here and make it harder for people to just sell alcohol. And if it's going to be this easy, I think I'm going to apply for one in a couple of weeks and open up my own restaurant and start selling margaritas on Friday nights because I'd make a lot more money. But please, just do the honorable thing.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name's Carol Windrum. I reside at 3735 North 39th Street. North Omaha is my home. My spouse and I have lived in North Omaha for 35 years. I am a neighbor. I do not want another business promoting alcohol in our community. We don't need it. We don't want it. Please do not renew this license.
Are there any other opponents?
Hello, my name is John Lucas, 6118 Ames Avenue, New Rising Star Baptist Church. We are the church right across the street from the Tobacco Hut that was here to testify when they went down to Lincoln in order to get their license. Pastor Cavett spoke well to say that we were able to stop that because our neighborhood is already inundated with so many liquor licenses. The elephant in the room in this particular case is these individuals were given a license and still sold to minors three times in approximately one and a half years. A liquor license is not a right that any business can have. It's a privilege that has to be granted by way of an application. And when that application has been granted, there's a responsibility that goes to that business. One of those responsibilities is to not sell to minors. These particular individuals have done that three times in the course of a year and a half. The first time, it's an accident, I understand. The second time, it's neglect. The third time, you just don't give a damn. And I do. I care about my kids. I have kids that we work with at Morton Middle School that live and hang out in that area. I don't want those kids to walk into a gas station and be able to get alcohol. I have a son, 14. I have a daughter. I don't want my kids or any kid that we're associated with be able to go to a gas station and be able to get alcohol. Even the Tobacco Hut, when they testified down in Lincoln, they talked about the fact that they had programs and they had trainings and that they did their own testing to make sure that clerks were not selling alcohol to minors. If the Tobacco Hut can do that, and that's a block away, then why in the hell can't NP Mart do the same thing to make sure that our community is safe and that alcohol is not being sold to minors? So I request the same thing that you've heard from many of the opponents. Please do not give them the opportunity to make the same mistake all over again. Please help us to protect our children and the children of this particular community.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Take your time.
Tommy Wilson, 8469 Brown Street.
Would you please pull the microphone down towards you? Thank you.
8469 Brown Street, a member of Claire Church. I just want us to think about what we are doing at Claire. We are trying to use a new way of meeting our people. We have outside church services, and that's for our young people, those people who do not get to come into the church. We allow them to play basketball out there. We don't want them to have to stop and go over to the liquor store, over to the gas station to get water because there's alcohol in there. We don't want that influence going on there. Me, we're in such a congested area there, it's a crowded area. We've got two or three liquor stores there in the community. We don't need another piece of alcohol being sold there in that community. We want our young people to be safe. We want them to have the opportunity to be able to play basketball on our court so that we can meet those who just don't get into the church, and we have a service that's going on. For the last couple of weeks, we've been celebrating our 106th anniversary there at Claire with a lot of activities going on with alcohol in that area, with those departments that are around there, with the diverse community that we have. We don't need any more alcohol. So we'd like to really plead to you that we do not allow another permit for alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me assure some of the opponents here that in relationship to getting notice, we didn't find out ourselves until this morning that if there is a management change, no notice is sent. We weren't aware of that. So I wanted to clear that up because we didn't know it. I want to give you a brief bit of history here. Let me start out by saying I don't intend to support this license, but let me give you a brief bit of history here. And Chris, I think you were steepening it well when you got on Project Extra Mile. A number of years ago, more than I care to think about sometimes, our president's former law partner and I, and a number of others, went down to try and fight this change so that there wouldn't be this proliferation of liquor licenses because we knew if we went to the legislature and the legislature passed this, that we were going to see something like this. The legislature passed it, and we are now left to live with what the legislature passed. I was not aware of the three instances where liquor was sold to a minor. That's a serious offense for me. My intent was to secure some concessions from you all earlier, but my position has changed because selling to minors is not something that I'm going to support, and so I won't be supporting this liquor license. But I do want you all to have that background and know that there have been, we had fought consistently for a long period of time to stop this kind of proliferation, and it is a significant problem in North Omaha, but it's a problem in Omaha, period. There are way more liquor licenses here than there are in some of the larger cities that I go to. For example, I'm from Cleveland. When I go to Cleveland, you know, if you don't get to the state store by 10 o'clock, and there's only a few of them, if you don't get to the state store, you don't get liquor that day. This city and this state has a proliferation of licenses that I think has been too far out of hand for too long, but the only change that's going to happen there to make that any better is going to be with the legislature. But I just wanted you to know about the situation in terms of when we have to notify. We weren't aware of that as a council until this morning at our council briefing that that was the case. But I do not intend to support this license, and it's primarily due to the selling of minors. That is pretty much a death stroke for me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I appreciate the testimony here today, and I agree there are some troubling issues here that have been presented to us, and I appreciate having that information. I first wanted to address the comment a little bit, though, about the ease of getting a liquor license through the city council. Although the applications before us did go through quite quickly and without many questions, that's questions, that's because the councilmember from that district has already checked it out and has already talked to those folks if they had any questions and reviewed whatever criminal history they may have had or any incidents or tavern reports they may have had. And if they had had any, they would they would not have gone through easily. I think many of them are also established businesses, and there are plenty of businesses that are well-run and don't have incidents that have liquor licenses appropriately. So, I wanted to observe that, but also let folks know that when we do observe issues and and problems with liquor licenses, I think this council has been very strong in addressing those. In fact, I've spent the last day and a half working on one in my district that is a problem. And we're the we are the council that passed the Good Neighbor Ordinance and have worked hard on these issues to to address them. And I was a councilmember that voted against the Tobacco Hut you talked about because I have shared your concern about density in this area, and I still have that concern. But on top of that, what I learned today, which I think is very troubling and even more serious, is the sale to minor issue in 2018 and 2019. So, I'm highly skeptical, too, and unlikely to support this, but I do want to give the applicants a chance to address those sale to minors because they are here. If you want to come to the podium and address those three issues and what happened there.
You have to give us your name and address.
I'm John Nasir, yes, 16962 Polk Street.
And you're the current owner?
Yes. It was just the management. I know, yes, we had the issues. That's why I was putting my brother because he's going to be there, like managing this place. I had employees. We trained him. We do whatever things we could. Of course, you know, I don't work there. I have.
The question was, did you have three sales to minors in a year and a half?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I I'm putting my brother as a manager over there. And the thing was, you know, we are trying to expand this property, so that was kind of bank's requirement to have my brother as a manager there. That's why the survey was done for it. Since this area is, you know, I I see the concerns of the people. I appreciate it that, you know, they are concerned, but normally it's like existing location. I know there was issues. We're trying our best to resolve it, and that's why I'm just trying to put my brother to as a, he's going to be the 24/7 there because he will be the one who's operating it. Because before I had employees, you know, we trained them, we do whatever we can, but it still was, you know, the employees hold it, you know.
And then can you address the ownership issue, too, that was a little confusing? So, you are you remain the owner, but your brother will be the operator under what you're applying for?
Yes.
There's been a change of name, right?
Yes.
Why is that?
We are expanding the building, so it's First National Bank financing it. For the financing requirement, we're supposed to have a different company operating as a for the business, so that's why it's changing.
Okay. So, you answer that question is it's a business issue between you and your banker?
Yes.
All right. I'll give the floor for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
And I I think my biggest concerns are are the selling to minors, and I I want to thank Chris for putting together the this sheet for us, too, because it's got information that I, hold on, wait till I'm done. Because this is information I would have liked to have had before now, and we weren't given and wouldn't have had without you providing this information. I'm going to assume if I look this up that it is all true, but I'm very concerned when I go down to Big Gems Plus, and it shows that that is owned by Rana Petroleum, so that's your brother.
No, 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 that's my company.
That's your, I mean, your company?
Each entity is different, yes, company, yes.
Okay. But you're the manager and registered agent for Big Gems Plus?
Yes.
And that there was a sale to minors on March 1st, 2019 there as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And and I guess what what I'm just curious about is it looks like you're the manager for Rana Petroleum, and you're saying that your brother, Rana, has nothing to do with that?
No.
Okay. They just happen to have the same name?
Yes, same last name.
Okay. And I guess when I look on here, all of the the addresses for all of the companies, though, are 16962 Polk Street.
Yeah, that's our office.
That's a house.
Yeah, it's a house, I believe, a house in Armbruce Acres.
Yeah.
I think.
I looked it up. It's a nice-looking house, too.
My parents lived there for many years, good neighborhood. But but that's the address of the business, and so what, I mean, really what it looks like to me is you're you're just putting your brother's name on this to, and exactly what Pastor Cabot said, to avoid closure and avoid any, any.
No, I paid the fine. The fine was paid, you know, I paid the fine. Fine is paid to the liquor commission for this.
Did you pay the $4,000?
I think it was close to that, yes.
Close to $4,000? Did you, were you closed for 12 days?
No, but the thing is, if you pay the fine, then you don't need to close. Then you close only two days.
I might defer to our president later, who's had more legal experience and probably can answer those questions. But I guess I'm kind of with the neighbors where you have this many sales to minors, not only at this address, but at another address that you have managed and registered, and I I guess I don't see where just putting your brother to replace you is going to make any difference because there's not going to be really a change.
He will be actually the working there 24/7. I had these issues on that specific location. I have four or five others, you know, there's no minor sale. 52nd and Radio, I had it from like almost five years.
Okay.
Never ever had.
So, where else has where else has your brother worked?
He was owning a store in Lincoln, but he doesn't work there anymore because I brought him here to manage this one because I was having the issues with employees here. They were selling to the minors, so that's why I want my brother to be operated, and he will be there 24 hours. You know, I mean, he will be the one who is actually running it, so we don't have that issue. Because the problem was, you know, I hired neighborhood people. We trained them. We do whatever, you know, we're supposed to. But, I mean, I see these issues. I mean, there's, as an owner, you know, I have like five, six different entities. Being a responsible owner, it's my job to, you know, see, tackle the issue.
Mr. Nasir, let me just, let me just go on with with the rest of my questions. But so, you say you're going to bring your brother in to run NP Mart, but then who's going to be running Big Gems Plus because there's a lot of issues at Big Gems as well?
I run this one.
So.
I'm there always.
So, you're at Big Gems always?
Yes. I'm mostly there. That's what our corporate office is.
So, you sold, there was a sale to minor in March, and then it looks like there were multiple disturbances, open container, and at least two illegal acts that have occurred at Big Gems.
When was it?
Well, at least according to this, there were disturbances in July of 18, August of 18, September of 18. There was an open container in August of 18, and there was.
Yes, some issues were, there was actually a, what I was working with Mr. Ben Gray, and we tried to tackle him, and it's pretty much, you know, that that area, you know, I mean, it's just the, it's not the issues in just my business is there. The issues are, of course, happens in big, in North Omaha. I have security. I hired the police to tackle, you know, I mean, we kind of tackled it, but it's still, some issues are, you know, this part of the town has some issues. It's not just the my business is there. It's just because, you know, it's the crime is there in that area, you know.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I I just want to say that I I think I have to, when I look at the, I mean, with what Chris has stated, and I think.
And the thing about this one is.
No, I'm not, now I'm going to talk for a little bit. But I think what Chris Hansen and Pastor Cabot and the other people who have come down, I mean, this really does look like a smokescreen that we're, you're just avoiding what has gone on with with selling to minors, and I think their concern, their concerns are always valid when they're worried about.
No, I appreciate their concerns.
Oh, whoa, 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 sir, you're out of order.
Sorry.
Actually, you can sit down if you if you'd like.
You were told by the councilmember that she was speaking, and there was not Q and A.
And you can say, and I guess this kind of goes goes to to everybody that came down here in opposition. I understand there have been numbers of concerns where people come down and oppose because they're concerned about minors drinking, and they're concerned about adding another liquor license. Here, there's already a liquor license, and we're not adding another one. However, because we actually have a location that's had one, and they have sold to minors, this isn't just speculation that because there's a liquor license, it may happen. I think what's happened is at this location, you've now presented to us, and it's been confirmed, it has happened. There are kids down there that are playing basketball that may want to go over there and get water or Gatorade or or something else, and there's alcohol there, and there's a, I mean, these, these aren't in the past, these are recent, and that there, I haven't heard any indication that would convince me that it's not going to happen again due to the number of times that it that it has happened. So, you know, I am one that I like to give businesses the opportunity to be good business owners, and if you can have a liquor license and control who you sell to and control, I'm not necessarily against all liquor licenses, but my concern is making sure it's responsible owners that have them. Because I'm all for sales, entrepreneurship, start your own business. But here, I I think that the facts are what they are, and and the people opposing are no longer speculating. It's been proven. So, I I'm going to have to to support Councilman Gray, especially when it's his when it's his district, and he has a recommendation. I first and foremost always take that into consideration because he knows his district, he knows the needs of his district and what should happen. But second, just on my own, I don't believe that this is a responsible liquor license owner, and the fact that you're just turning it over to your brother, again, I think is just a smoke shield. So, I unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you, sir, so you can sit down, but I just, and I apologize since we did just get some of this information. I had a question. Chris, I think you're the one who put this, Wagner, yeah. Not sure if this is really going to be a question for you or maybe law, but you have, I'm sorry.
I need to state my name.
Yeah, please.
Chris Wagner, 11620 M Circle.
So, on this, the information on the NP Mart at 5608 Ames, after the listings you have for the sale to minors, you have a bullet point here that says terminated 9/15 of 19. Can you explain what that is?
Right, so that's what happens when they file an application. So, the application for this one that you're considering now was sent to Lincoln. They received that. The the active license that was what was previously at that location is terminated, and then because it was a already licensed location, the new business is allowed on a temporary operating to continue selling alcohol until they get their license approved.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Sure.
That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for full disclosure from my councilmembers and the community as well, I engaged in a process with the Concord Mediation Center to address Big Gems Plus because there were significant issues that were going on there. And it was suggested by some of our city staff and others that we attempt to use this process to see, you know, if we're getting results or whatever. Big Gems, we we put up a fence, we did a number of different things to address what was going on there, and the illegal acts that you're talking about on 9/13 of 18 and 6, 3 of 19, they were both sales of marijuana in the parking lot were what those things were. And so, you know, I continue to try to work with them, but I'm also continue to be disappointed in what I see in that area, but I will continue with my efforts with that. But knowing what the difficulty was there and some of the other areas as well, I just can't support this one, especially knowing that there were three instances of selling to a minor in the last year and a half. That's just something I can't do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for some clarification on the process and possibly for law.
Ryan Weasley.
Oh.
Mr. Weasley.
Mr. Weasley. And I'll ask why you're you're coming up to the podium there. So, we have, it seems, a change of ownership, and I don't know what the will of the council is, but if this were to be not approved today, it would go or stay in the previous owner's name with, I mean, it's, what would be, what would happen if this was not approved today? With the current location?
Ryan Weasley, City Attorney. It's my understanding, just from the limited information that I have, that the license appears to have been terminated, so there is currently no license. If the council were to recommend denial of this liquor license, that denial would then go to the Liquor Control Commission in Lincoln, who would consider the council's recommendation as the local recommending body, and the city would then have an individual, maybe who would go down to present the city council's case for denial at that time. The Liquor Control Commission would then make the ultimate decision on whether or not the license should be issued.
And can you verify that it is terminated, even though we were given this by an outside party?
Not at this very moment, but I could do that at a later time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. I have a few things to say about this license application, and it reminded me of of my younger days before moving to the Midwest in the late 80s. Occasionally, my family would go into New York City, and you'd see these guys with the shell games. And and you give them a buck, and you, that's the last you see that buck. I mean, and their pile grows. So, I, it's a smokescreen or a shell game, whatever you want to call it. I think this is a classic case of hidden ownership and control where somebody who's gotten himself into real big trouble is trying to play a fast one with the system to transfer "ownership" in quotes, so the record is clear, but really not change any any way substantively. And I'm I'm just convinced that they haven't. But I want to make a couple other comments because I know how important it is for me as a councilmember and as I've witnessed with others who have had areas of our city that have been blighted and and had issues come back to life. I've seen Elkhorn and and the work that you've done to transform that area. I've seen Florence, and and I've seen, you know, we've seen Blackstone, and we've seen all different areas and more areas to come. And let's look at the investment going on with the city on Ames. How many meetings did I go to with the mayor and Councilmember Gray where what's up with, what, where are we, where are we on Ames? What are we doing on Ames? And you go out to Ames, and you can't help but see the construction barrels and the work that's being done. You can't help but see the Metro Federal Credit Union at Florence Boulevard in Ames. You can't help but see North Star, the Walmart, the Med Center, Heartland Workforce Solutions on the same block as this place. You have people investing millions, and the taxpayers investing many more millions to clean up this part of our city, to bring it back to what it once was, a healthy, clean, vibrant place to live, to work, to play. And I think about the kids, you know, Heartland Workforce Solutions just doesn't service in the 2,000 or so a month that go in and out of that place looking for work, on adults. It's also youth, and it's it's the elderly. And when you pull up or you go up by this place, and all they're doing is these big old illegal signs, by the way, you're plastered with these temporary illegal signs, you know, flaunting your nose at the law there, trying to draw people in, and kids, time and time again. And so, I don't think with the clear signal that the liquor commission sent to this council on on trying to be a partner with the neighborhood in bringing back this part of our city and the millions that have been invested since, that that this is a place that we want to have this kind of business. And so, it's twofold. I think this is a sham, and and I don't think that this is this is something that ought to continue at that location. So, I join in supporting you, Mr. President, because I know how important Ames is to you in that neighborhood. And I, and you, as you know how much some of these have been to me in my district, as I do the others that have worked so hard in your districts. So, there's, is there a motion?
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palms.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 17, to consider an addition application for Pizon's Pizzeria's Class CK liquor license located at 15605 West Center Road to add an outdoor. located at 15605 West Center Road to add an outdoor area approximately 51 feet by 27 feet to the west.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Matt Burzall, 15605 West Center Road. May I answer any questions?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Sir.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
17 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The item number 23 has been removed from consent, so is there a motion on 21, 22, and 24 through...
We need to do 18 to 20. We need to do 18 to 20.
Oh, I'm sorry.
18 to 20.
I always jump ahead of the resolutions. It's what you get when you don't wear your reading glasses. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 through 20 are approved, seven to zero.
Now, we're on the resolutions. The public hearings on agenda items 21 through 27 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent, and item 23 has been removed from consent.
Motion to approve items 21, 22, and 24 through 27.
We had someone wishes to speak, so...
25.
Yes, come on down.
Preston Pope, 2909 North 25th Street.
You're in favor of 25?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add to your testimony, or just wanted to know you're in support?
Just want... I just want everybody to know that I support this, and it's my idea, and I believe it's a great idea. We're one of the 11 states that doesn't have it. So, we're not the first, but not... We shouldn't be the last.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. There's a motion on the resolutions except for item 23. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 23, a resolution to authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Midwest Coatings Company, Inc. in the amount of $1,170,720 for joint crack sealing services for the street maintenance division.
The public hearing on item 23 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Vice President Palermo.
Counsel President Gray. Opponents.
Oh. Okay. Opponents. You guys know to sit closer.
Sorry about that.
I don't... My mother had eyes on the back of her head. I do not.
Well, Tony Burkhalter, 6910 Pacific Street. We are Local 251. We represent the civilian bargaining unit. Currently, we are doing crack seal operations. Not too recently, you guys were presented with a proposal to purchase new crack seal equipment for the purpose of us, I would think, to utilize the equipment. We currently have crews out doing crack seal. This million-dollar proposal to go to a contractor for the work that we currently do, even though we're... I would agree probably with the city that we are currently short-staffed in AEO-1 positions as far as full-time employees, but we utilize part-time employees for the crack seal. We just hired a recent class of eight AEO-1s that were sent over to crack seal Monday to begin operations. So, this one in itself would be... There's no reason for us to contract out the crack seal operations.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Kelsey Johnson, 6910 Pacific Street. So, we're still short on employees for our street maintenance department. As of beginning of September, added in the new hiring class we have, we're just around 82 employees. So, we haven't addressed the real issues that are going on in that department, the ability to hire people and to retain people. We're still seeing the same issues that we saw this past February. So, we need to stop just kicking the can down the road and actually address the issues instead of just hiring a contractor and putting a Band-Aid on things. So, we'd like to see the actual issues fixed, employees hired, retained. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Now, we'll close the public hearing. Vice President Palermo, you were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on this item, I wanted to ask a couple questions along with my colleagues. Mr. Fitzher, I believe you're the person with the answers today. I did want to say that I had asked about the purchase of a couple asphalt crack sealing machines that we did approve as a council back in July, which is good to hear because we know that when we approve equipment that we buy as a city, then we expect our city employees to use the equipment. And I wasn't sure on numbers, and maybe you know, what is our normal staffing for crack seal, and what do we currently have today?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works, 1819 Farnham. I would agree that we normally do use part-time employees for that. This year, as you know, we had an unprecedented pothole season, and we basically had every person available trying to keep up with that effort. We did purchase two kettles. They were approximately $45,000 apiece, so that is accurate information. We have done very little crack sealing this season because of the other demands on our workforce. I can give you the numbers on the workforce if that's what you're asking at this time, the AEO-1s and some of those.
Just the crack seal in general?
Well, we don't have employees that are specifically hired just to do crack seal, so I can't... That's not a question I can answer. We have AEO-1s and 2s that do that work and part-time employees that do that work when time becomes available. But as you know, those are the same employees that drive the snowplow trucks and fill potholes and do concrete work and those things. So, they have multiple tasks.
So, how many employees do we have currently that we're... If we don't have the employees in the crack seal now, that means we're pulling them from another place within the city. How many employees have we pulled to begin since we're behind on this crack sealing?
I don't have that information. I don't know how many employees we have working on crack sealing today. That was the question that was asked of me in pre-council is could I provide information on how many employees we are down? I have that information if anybody would like to have it as far as how many are working on crack sealing at the present time. I don't have that information.
Yeah, and that's fair enough, and that's a tough question without knowing. I did want to say as street maintenance goes, at least in the past, that crack sealing was in... Obviously, you know this, so this would be for the people who don't. Crack sealing has always been the department that if you... Maybe you weren't on the full-time list. This was your avenue into the city. This was the way that you could get some experience. You could work on getting your CDL, figure out the rules of the road, know where the different yards are. And this was always a department that was fully staffed, that you were hoping to get on part-time and then to filter in to possibly a full-time AEO-1 spot. So, if we know that we don't have the employees for this, it follows along with the fact that we are short employees. And for me, if I'm always preaching, let's figure out a pipeline for different jobs and different groups around the city for development, it seems like we as a city aren't following through on our own end with our own pipeline to generate employees. Now, we know we're short, and there's a million different reasons, and whatever it is, but somewhere, somehow, and not at you, but you're there, so I'm speaking to you, we're missing something. We're missing something in this process of where have these employees gone? Why aren't they applying? What is the holdup during the process? And for me, if we're going to sit back and approve different machines and better machines and maybe the safety of different equipment that we use, I now have to question that because now I have to worry, is a few months later, there going to be an agenda item to subcontract out this same work that we're approving equipment to do? And if we're hearing that we're short on crack seal employees, which part-time people that we don't have, I can only assume that within the next few months, where are the operators going to be that are going to be in the snowplow trucks? Because this is how this filters through the pipeline. So, there's some concern here. And if I look through to the bidding process, Midwest Coatings has employees. I mean, they're not from Omaha, but obviously, they're going to be here during the work. What are they doing different than the city of Omaha, street maintenance, Public Works Department is doing to retain these employees that are coming and ultimately taking these jobs from future 251 employees? Because if crack seal is part-time, then obviously, they're not part of that bargaining unit yet. If we're reading this, that we're subbing this out, I promise you, you are seeing the end result of a problem coming this winter, and if we don't get on top of it now, then we're going to be in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Thanks. And Mr. Fitzher, so I'm going to go back to Kathy in just a minute, but I just want to get to the bottom of things regardless of where the problem is. If we don't pass this today, and you're telling me you don't have the employees to do the crack sealing, because by the way, I still have potholes in Northwest Omaha that haven't been filled. I have to return one of the calls today. So, in my district, and I know we had the most, but there are still unfilled potholes. So, you're telling me that the engineers are still filling those potholes, so you don't have enough to go do the crack seal. Is that right?
That is correct.
And if we don't pass this today, then are the streets that need to be crack sealed going to go unsealed? And then what's the result of unsealing in terms... Especially in terms of road maintenance and future potholes after this winter?
If you don't pass this today, the majority of the streets that need to be crack sealed are going to go untreated. The result of that is water's going to get down into those cracks, into the subbase of the road, and it's going to pop when it freezes, and we're going to have even more potholes. So, this is... You've all heard us talk over the years about the need for ongoing street maintenance. This is a provenly effective method in preserving your asset of your streets to get out and do the crack seal, keep the water out of that subbase, and try to preserve the streets that we have. And that's what we're trying to do with this contract.
And what steps are you... What steps are... Is your department... I don't want to say you, like, it's all on you, but what steps is the department taking to try and make sure that these positions are getting filled? Now, mind you, I mean, the city of Omaha is 3% unemployment, so I think the city of Omaha is not the only employer in the city that is struggling to hire people. So, but what is it that we're doing or that we're attempting to do to fill those spots?
Well, we're always advertising. There's... Two of these positions are open today. If you get into our HR website and look, we're working with our human resources department. There's currently an ongoing study for salary, and clearly, I'm hoping that it comes back, that we can provide better salary and enticements to fill these positions. But the bottom line is, you're right, there's 3% unemployment in Omaha, and we are competing directly with folks like MUD and OPPD and contractors. I attended a meeting last week on workforce development with the potential for a bond issue to do more street maintenance, and the contractors, the private contractors, don't have the staff and the people that they need to expand their operations either. So, we just generally have a shortage of workforce. And as we've discussed in front of this council, these folks work hard. They work very hard. They work long hours. It's very hard physical work. It's outside. There's a lot asked of them. It's very difficult work, and so, it's hard to keep those folks employed.
So, what I want to do is... What I don't want to do is take an issue with the workforce, which I know we need to work on and we need to help. I mean, some things are within your control, I think, and some things not. And maybe if we could work with the civilian bargaining unit a little bit more to figure out what we could do, which Kathy, I'll talk to you about later. But what I don't want to do is, whether it be an internal problem or just a workforce problem in this city all over, what we can't do is have potholes everywhere, having people pop their tires, have our taxpayers and residents of our city and non-residents of our city who are coming in and buying and paying sales tax and everything else into our city, and we're going to have another pothole problem. So, this is pothole prevention.
This is pothole prevention, and I would respectfully ask that for the sake of our streets, that we make this effort to try to prevent the billions of dollars of infrastructure that we're trying to protect with this effort.
So, what I don't want to happen is have some political issue come in and then have our streets suffer because of it.
I don't want that either.
And that's... I mean, that's what I fear, is that there... I think there are issues that need to be solved, and there are problems that we have, but I don't know that we can make our streets, potholes, and drivers suffer because of maybe shortcomings that we're having here at the city level with employees, whatever they may be.
And we will not meet our crack sealing goals this year, crack sealing goals, without this contract. We simply will not. I'm not suggesting we won't have anybody out there doing it, but we will not meet the goals without this contract.
And then... And again, if we don't meet those goals, the water's already going to be in, so it's not like we can go back out and crack seal them in the spring. The water's already going to be in there, and it's already going to cause the pressure and cause the concrete to...
That's correct. This is preventative maintenance. It's a proven method used by DOTs and cities throughout the country, and our streets need it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fitzher. Ms. Johnson, I was wondering if you could come up and just answer a few questions that you may or may not, and so...
Kelsey Johnson, 6910 Pacific Street.
I'm just wondering, do you have any recommendations or suggestions as to what we could do differently?
There have been... There have been numerous times we've spoken to different people. There is a management issue in street maintenance, retaining people, keeping them there. It's a real problem, and it's a problem caused by management. So, I mean, we have, I believe it was 23 operator 2s. 12 of them put in a transfer. I mean, there's... We need the actual issues addressed. I understand that we have to do the crack seal, like, we don't have the people, and but we can't keep kicking the can down the road.
Right.
We need to address this issue so we don't come back every year with emergency contractors coming in. We need to keep people here, hire what we're budgeted for because we aren't even... Most of the main categories in street maintenance, we don't even have the budgeted amount of employees hired, only in operator 3s, so we...
Right. So, we budgeted the money.
Right.
I mean, the money's there, but...
Right.
And you heard Mr. Fitzher, and I've heard it from other private contractors as well that are doing our streets. They are struggling for employees, so it's... We're not the only ones.
But you also have a company coming in that has, you know, and I believe they have eight crews that they're going to come in, so they're doing something. They are doing something to have their employees there and to have that many crews and be able to come get this work done by November. So, it's not everyone. So, there is something going on in the city of Omaha that we've addressed before and still hasn't been addressed.
So, and... Well, and actually, Tony, could I ask you this question? Thank you. And I think we understand some of the issues. What I want to ask you, though, are you down here... Are you willing to sacrifice the potholes that will result from crack sealing by asking us to vote against this today based upon the issues that we're having now? I mean, do you see the issue that I have? I just wanted to know what your opinion is on that.
was the results of a abnormal winter, correct?
Well, the enormous potholes, but that, not, yeah.
Well, it created the pothole epidemic, right?
That was all over the country, yeah.
Well, Omaha in general.
All over our country, yeah.
I didn't see it in Kansas City, so, I was, but Omaha in general.
I did.
So, I believe it all depends on the weather. Now, I'm not saying that we're going to sacrifice this. I don't believe that the city has invested enough in trying to hire the individuals. It'd be a question for HR of how are you actively recruiting employees to fill these positions? Are you going to job fairs? Are you hosting job fairs? I don't think that's the case.
No, and I think, I think you're making valid points. I just wanted to clarify, we have an issue right now where the crack sealing, if we don't pass this today, the crack sealing isn't going to get done until the end of the year, which is going to result in, and, you know, the water and problems with our roads. So I, and I understand exactly where you're coming from. I guess what I was saying is, what are you asking us to do here? Are you asking us to vote no on this, or are you just coming down saying, hey, this is a problem? We know the crack sealing needs to get done, but, but something needs, the city of Omaha has to take significant steps at this point in time in order to try and get more, you know, AE01s, AE02s, and other people hired to fill spots that are actually budgeted. It's not like they're not budgeted. We have the money to pay people. We're just having a problem finding people that want to, that want to do the work.
Right. I stand here in opposition of this contracting out the million dollars to a contractor. The, the city has resources, right? Currently, we have a special projects team that we, we put together. And what the crew is doing, we have no clue, they don't even know what they're doing. They're just going around hauling dirt and whatnot, right? Why is it these employees, or full-time current employees, AE01s? Director Stube may elaborate on what the special projects is, it's, he's directly over it. Why is it that these employees cannot just be simply shifted down to the crack seal department?
Well, I think, and I think Ms. Johnson said that the company we're hiring is going to bring in eight crews, so I doubt we have eight crews that we could transfer at this point. So I, my, my problem is, by voting yes for this, voting yes for our roads. You know, I think there's an issue, there are issues that are, that are occurring that we need to help job, I mean, and I think one of your recommendations is job fairs. I think really, if you've got recommendations on how we can hire more people and what we can do to try and get to those who need jobs, and here we have the jobs with great benefits and everything else, I think that's what we need to do. What I don't want to do, though, is sacrifice the condition of our roads because of, be it internal, external problems that we're having with the positions.
Right.
So I, what I want to say is, my vote for this is for the roads, not necessarily because we're not listening to what you have to say.
And I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Little did I know this morning, when I said I wanted to talk about this, this issue, that I realized it was becoming a political thing. I'm trying to find the answers here, and I know we have some issues with not having enough people, and I understand the complexity of, everybody wants a certain group of individuals. I do get that. And I'm, I want the roads sealed. And it says right, as I'm reading here, this individual or this company, by November 23rd, they must have this done. And we need it done before the winter sets in. I'm not arguing with that at all. In fact, I'm just trying to set up some things, so let's not let this happen in the future. Because this year, this is, to me, this is almost a done deal, because apparently, we do not have enough people to do it. And some of the questions that have been brought up back and forth, I think somebody's telling us that we need to take a look at this issue. Now, Public Works are doing a little bit of it, but maybe we need to really embrace this and see, hey, why are these issues happening? Because I'm learning so much about looking at bids and things like that, I mean, I'm almost impressing myself, guys. Here's a number of things. I look at this, because I want the money that we're going to spend, that million dollars, I want to be spending with local money, basically, with the people here. So when I checked out, the president of this company, and the address of this company is Modell, Iowa, which is a town under, of 263 people. Well, I know 263 people, they're not going to be able to bring 28 of their people here, so they have to be hiring people from this area. So then I, I look at this, they have a total of 28, or 26 employees, and they have a number of employees per sealing crew, eight on a crew. So that means, basically, just roughly, that means they have three crews. And the neat thing about it is, they have 108 miles that they're going to have to do that's, that you guys have asked them to seal. And the nice thing about it is, I do hope this is on the website, because right now, I can go to my district, and I can see how much we're going to pay for that 0.6 of a mile or 0.23 tenths of a mile, because there are 60 bids that were put out, or 60, I'm calling them bids, 60 segments. And they've been voted on, or bidded on, so it's interesting. So I think if, I may ask, is this on the website? So if somebody wanted to pull up and see what street is being, great. And I, well, one of the reasons I'm doing this is for, so the public to find out. And you can see, in other words, on the council here, I can see, gee, my particular District Five, compared to everybody else, I'll just see how well I'm being treated. I'm doing that with a smile. Because I even looked up the number of miles. It is interesting, you look at the number of miles or percentages of miles and the cost, and I'm looking at that, gee, my Christmas, how do they get all those numbers? Because the same amount of miles or percentages, but the cost is different, so I'm assuming there are more cracks in that street, that particular area. Can I just have, have you come up? I just have a question, because I'm learning on this.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works.
Okay, let's say there's a particular section that's, that's a lot, like, there's 60 of them. Let's say it's like on Harrison Street. Who goes, do we go out and say, from this point to this point, that's how much that block is going to be worth?
Is going to cost? No, that's, that's bid. We go out and, we, we put together the areas, this is the areas we need crack sealing.
Okay, that's what I'm, okay, so you say, okay, these, all these 60 different.
It's evaluated within our street maintenance.
And you guys go out and say, hey, this street really looks like it needs a seal?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Which, I mean, I assume that.
Yeah, it's the same, yeah, I'm sorry.
You know, then I, as a company, I say, hey, I'm going to bid, because I noticed we only had two bidders, and basically, one did hardly any bids at all, I mean, on the segments.
Yeah, we put it together the same way we do our resurfacing plan or our panel replacement. We evaluate, you know, where we have needs, and we put that into a package, realizing we were not going to get it done, and put that out there, because, back to the point, it needs to get done, or it's going to cost more later to fix if we don't get it done now.
So I am assuming, as I, which I did this morning, that we need to pass this right now, because if we do not fill the cracks, of course, the streets will deteriorate. And hopefully, this will catch us up so in the spring, because normally, you told me, I think earlier, that we do this normally in the spring.
We normally do it in the spring and early summer, we try to get a million linear feet done a year. This will help us meet our goal for the, for the annual season. It's part of our street maintenance program that we do so many lineal feet per season in order to keep our streets functional as long as we can.
But our bad winter sort of caught us behind.
Well, as you know, we had unprecedented pothole season, and there's lots and lots of reasons, but we did. And so instead of being done with potholes by early June, like we normally are, as Council Representative Melton pointed out, we're still, really, we're still kind of backlog. I mean, we're doing a lot better than we were three months ago, but we still have a backlog of potholes, and it's going to start snowing here in four to six weeks.
Probably, I think before this is finished.
Don't, don't say that.
Okay, okay, that's, okay, well, thank you. I, this is actually sort of a complicated issue, like you say, going out, seeing which streets need to be worked on, and have the bid go out. And we just do, do not have an awful lot of people bidding on these, appears.
Well, as we've indicated kind of throughout this conversation, contractors are busy. There's, there's a lot going on.
But this one did have 26 people, and they're from small-town Iowa. So I'm assuming they're getting people from Omaha or maybe the surrounding areas.
I don't have that answer.
It'd be, I'd be curious, and maybe this is what's, if you're looking at this, maybe this is what we could find out, what they're paying those individuals, because you say, we are doing a study to see whether our salaries are in the, in the right range.
HR has, is doing a citywide study, and I think you're probably on to the answer right there. I think that, that our wages potentially could be more competitive when we look at some of our competitors around here. We're hearing that from contractors, we're hearing it from, from other utilities. It's, it's kind of a challenge right now with the unemployment being so low. And, you know, these folks are trying to support families, and they're trying to go where they can earn the most and have the best life.
Yeah, which, I think that's what most of us want.
Of course.
So that's, I'm just trying to get this thing to work and, and keep the, you know, the A's and A's, just to get her done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me back up just a little bit here, because I'm, I guess I'm hearing two stories, and I guess I don't know which one is accurate. So I guess I'll just have to ask it point-blank. Are we, is our problem hiring individuals, or is our problem retention? Somebody answer that for me. Is it, is it, is it, is it finding people to hire? Because I keep hearing that we're, we're, we're having trouble getting people hired, but then I've also heard that we've got AE01s on who leave or go somewhere else, or, because I want it, so I'm asking the question, is the problem, we don't have people to hire, or people are not applying for the job, or is the problem retention, keeping those people?
Todd Fitzher, Public Works. Councilman, I'll answer this from a Public Works standpoint to the best of my ability, and some of this is opinion, but I have been following this. I think the answer to your questions are yes. We are having problems bringing people on, we advertise continuously, we normally don't get all the numbers that we need, and then we have to go through, and there are candidates that are, that are not accepted for various reasons, through background checks, through things like that, so they don't, they don't even make it to the first cut. And then, the answer to your second question is yes, we are having problems with retention. As you all know, you, you've followed the, the waste management contract throughout the summer. CDL is, is gold right now, and we train our employees with CDLs, and we lose a great number of our employees as soon as they get their CDLs, they go somewhere else that's paying them more money. So that retention is a problem. The other thing, and this can be a good thing, from a Public Works and otherwise city workforce standpoint, these positions are entry-level positions, as someone alluded to earlier. So if you have a good employee who's outstanding, they are looking to better themselves. So they, they tend to try to move their way up the ladder, and they, and they graduate out of these positions, so to speak, and they end up at a treatment plant or somewhere else within Public Works or somewhere else within the city, the Parks Department perhaps. So they're coming in through the Public Works front door, and, and the ones that are bad and don't like the work tend to leave, the ones that are really good look for opportunities and move up, but this position is constantly being filled, that we're talking about today.
Okay, the other thing that I have is, I keep hearing over and over again from frustrated council members, from frustrated elect, laborers and others, that we got a management problem. And I've heard that for about the last six months now. We did a survey, where is that survey? Someone tell me where the survey is.
The survey was done in HR, I, I have not, I was not part of the survey.
The survey was done several months ago, because we did it in HR.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Recently, we took over the chairmanship of the Human Resources and Human Rights and Relations Committee, and Councilmember Pauls and I, and we're at a meeting where, were you, were you at the latest meeting? The, where the acting HR director came, Joe Campbell.
I was at one of the meetings.
Were you there, Rich?
Yes.
Yeah. So the, the outgoing HR director said before he departed, there was a management thing that had been identified, a problem, and we can't go into it because it's personnel. But he also, they had gone through enough of the surveys to know that. When he left, the acting HR director came in, and the first thing we asked was, are you aware of the situation? She was not. Did they have the surveys? Those had been secured. They were going to start all over again.
Okay.
So it's going to be many more months before we get answers.
Give me a short. I understand your comment about kicking the can down the road, because it seems like that's what we're doing here. I, I, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. And I find this conversation discouraging, too, because this is exactly the same conversation we had in February, right? At that time, it was about contracting out potholes, and it was February, I believe, and it was, potholes were upon us, and it wasn't epidemic, as was described here today. So I said at the time that I did not support contracting out those services, I want our employees to do it, but I realized the emergency situation we were in, and I did end up supporting that contract. But I said at the time, I would be very unlikely to do that again, and I acknowledge the same thing we're hearing today, that we have a workforce and retention issue and a number of employees issue. I don't have any reason to doubt that. So it's concerning to me that it's, that's still an issue that's been unaddressed, and the information we just heard about, the HR department's efforts to address that is very discouraging, too. So I find myself back in the same situation, although we're not talking about filling potholes, I guess we're talking about crack sealing today. And it's September or October 1st, and it's not February. That's a long way of saying, if we're voting on this today, I'm not voting for it. I think these issues got to get addressed. I think it has been kicked down, the can has been kicked down the road, and remaining consistent with what I said in February, this needs to get addressed, and we, our employees should be doing this work. And I'm very reluctant to contract out this work, I just keep doing that until these things get addressed. I might be willing to consider laying this over for a week. I think the Public Works Committee is getting a briefing on these matters next Tuesday, I understand, or at least a short one that might be helpful. And hopefully, it is, but that's a long way of saying, I'm, I'm either supporting a delay today, or I'll be voting no today. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I can't say I'm not surprised by the discussion. I think we're all in the same boat with scratching our head with street maintenance. I mean, let's just be honest. Other departments to the city are not having the same challenges, and roads are very important. They're important to the mayor, they're important to me and everybody else. But how long are we going to keep saying the bad winter we had, the bad winter we had? Because, Mr. Fitzher, you said something, so I'm going to ask you about it, now this is directed towards you.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works.
You said if this was not approved, we would not, the chuckles that were put in would not be safe, or they, they wouldn't last if this were not approved? Or, is that what you said?
No. I'm not sure what you're referring to. What I said was, if this is not approved, we will not meet our crack sealing goals, our lineal feet goals for the year.
Okay, so let me back up. So do we crack seal potholes?
We crack seal cracks in the street. Potholes are not, no, we don't crack seal potholes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to make clear. Thank you. We do not crack seal potholes. That means the Band-Aids that we put on the city streets, because we are so far behind employees, this isn't going to help them. They're still going to be there, because they haven't been milled the way they should be, where you go out and you fix that Band-Aid. If you get a sore and you get a Band-Aid put over it, you go to the doctor and get it fixed and it heals up. These potholes that we have put a temporary patch in have not been fixed. This crack seal is not going to help them. This is for panels, this is for cracks. This is not for potholes, correct?
It's not for potholes. It will cause more potholes to form, but it's not for existing potholes. You are correct.
Yeah, absolutely. I got cracks in my driveway, and if I don't crack seal them, hmm.
That's right.
Maybe they'll end up something, maybe they won't. So when we hear, because this is how this is going to be spun, because every single item, oh, Vinnie's against sweepers, he doesn't want District 4 swept. No, that's not the truth. I'm discouraged that we don't have the employees to operate them, and they sit there and collect dust, and we sub it out for a million dollars. Oh, Vinnie doesn't want the pothole people to be subbed out because he doesn't want a roads fixed? No, that's not true. Our employees should be doing this. They care more than these contractors do for another $5 million. And now we sit here today with a crack seal for another million dollars? I mean, we don't need finance to add it up, but this is a lot of money that could go to invest through whoever to get these employees that we need. So it isn't kicking the can, it's straight neglect within hiring these people, and it's only this department. So I want to make it clear, this crack seal is not for potholes, because that's what we heard earlier about, the potholes are there and they're bad. It's not for potholes, correct?
It is to prevent future potholes.
Future potholes. Can you tell me how to predict future potholes?
I cannot predict future potholes. What I'm referring to is when you have a crack in the street, if water gets into that crack and freezes, that's what destroys the street. The purpose of this sealing effort is to seal the crack so that the moisture does not get down. So if we take this lineal feet, this million lineal feet today, and to use your driveway example, I can't predict how many potholes are going to happen in a million lineal feet, but if we seal that and we keep the water out of that subbase, it's going to let that street and help that street last longer. If we don't, and the water gets into that street, we will have new potholes in some of these areas that we would not have otherwise had if we sealed them.
So I would agree with that. This will help, but we can't predict. And the potholes we have, they're not going to get any better. I'm just going to give people the bad news now who are paying attention. They're going to get worse, because we don't have the employees to make this happen. And subbing all this out for millions of dollars doesn't help either. So, let me ask you, so we're not addressing the bad winter, which we all know we had. The previous year, did the city of Omaha do their own crack seal?
I can't remember which year is the last year that we had our crack sealing goal met. I believe it was '18. I'd have to go back and look at the records. But we did not get to it this year.
Sorry, okay.
I'm sorry, I can get that information, but I don't have it right in front of me.
No, I'm going to make it even more fair. The previous year, did we either sub out or fulfill the crack sealing within the city of Omaha, whether with our employees or subbing out the year before this bad winter?
Before '18, or before the last winter, you mean? That's why I said, I don't have that information. I can get with our street maintenance engineer, and I can find out what the goal was with regard to crack sealing, and how many lineal feet we got done. I don't have that in front of me right now. I'm sorry, I don't know. We make every effort, every year, to do our crack sealing. But I can't tell you how many lineal feet we did in '17, '18.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is, if we did this the year before, whether with us or subcontractors, look at what the roads...
Yeah.
Look at what happened to them last year. So as we sit here and we think, if this gets approved, oh my gosh, it's going to solve all the problems. It's not.
I didn't say it was going to solve all the problems.
And we don't know how much it's going to help.
Is that a question?
Yeah. Do we know how much this is going to help? Is it just a guess?
It's going to prevent a million lineal feet of surface from getting infiltrated with water. And that's a good thing. I can't put a percentage that's going to save us 10% or 50% of our potholes. Like, nobody can. But it's good preventative maintenance practice.
Well, because I know, I will say, and because the hard-working employees that we have in 251 are taking care of the streets, this isn't going to help much. Sure, it's going to help, just like everything else we approve for millions of dollars. And it's not your fault, we're short people. Not you directly, but I think you probably have some control over that. And I think we can try to fix this problem, because we're all aware of it, and we all know about it. It's just, how long do we want to keep telling people, "Well, we know about your roads, but approve this, and it'll make them better"? No, it didn't, because them potholes, them millions of dollars we put out for subcontractors, you know how frustrating that was? And I'm getting off topic, I apologize. To see them subcontractors work on a stretch of street, to just see us as a city come out and grind it back up and reasphalt it? How do we know some of these linear miles with the crack seal won't be the same case? We don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you. Before I say what I was planning on saying, I'm going to... I'm having a little trouble with the logic just presented. If we had the city employees then internally to do the crack sealing, it sounds like you would suggest that we do that. But at the same time, you think that's not going to do any good. So I'm having problems following that logic. But...
Does that mean it's directed to me?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Was that a question?
No, it was a statement. It was a statement. So, look, I was going to try to keep it simple. I understand the management issue. I understand that that's a concern. I also understand the unemployment issue, and the challenge that not only the city has, but other contractors, other employers have, of finding good qualified people to bring into a company, and hopefully bring them along, and keep them as long-term employees. Those are all issues that aren't going to be solved today. What I'm concerned about is our streets. If we don't do the crack sealing, there is the likelihood that we're going to have further deterioration of our streets. I'm not in a position today to think that we're going to solve those two issues I said about management and employee retention and recruitment. The issue is that we have a contract to consider today that's going to provide the crack sealing, the needed crack sealing that Public Works has said that we need, in order to help keep our streets in the best possible shape they can be. It's not a cure-all, it's not intended to be a cure-all. But it certainly is a preventative measure that we can take to help ensure that the streets can be the best they possibly can be. I don't feel like a gun is being held to our head in order to pass this today. But what I do know is, if we don't pass this, if the work doesn't get done, then our streets are going to be in worse condition. So I hope we continue to work on hiring and retention issues. I hope we consider or continue to work on figuring out if there are management issues and how to address those. In my mind, today, separate issues. What I'm concerned about today is passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I see, like, there are two issues, and I think that's been sort of brought out. We have 108 miles that apparently need to be sealed. I don't think we can just say, well, let's skip it this year and go on. And we do not have the personnel to do it. So I think actually, it leaves us with one choice, is to approve this. But having everybody understand, we've talked this so much, that people know that there's an issue that needs to be resolved. But 108 miles need to be sealed, or they would not be, wouldn't be... I don't think the Public Works would have presented this. I'm also curious why this one company, and it has to be a relatively small company, has 26 employees to do this, with a crew of eight, eight in a crew. There's something, we ought to maybe talk to them and see, hey, how do you do this? But I don't think we have a choice on this particular time.
Thank you. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to be clear, I too know that we don't have the employees in place to make this happen this year. So, believe it or not, no matter how much I am against this, I'm going to be approving it as well. Not because I agree with the process, but because I don't want to sit here in a few months and say, "Well, you know, that crack sealing, boy, if we would have just got that done, we wouldn't have any potholes in this city." No, I'm going to work with everybody to make sure our roads are in the best shape they can possibly be, to see where the problems are, to work and to make this work. But we're traveling dangerously down the road to subbing out all of this work to employees who just don't care as much as the employees we have. And if we have to sit here and say, "Okay, we're short 20, 30, 40 employees", look, places can be run short-staffed. They can't be run short-staffed with bad management. And that's where we are. I think we have employees that are leaving because they're frustrated. You can't replace that experience. But I'm not going to be against the roads. It's just disappointing that there's millions of dollars that could be going towards better insurance, better wages, or whatever it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm going to be very brief. Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to support this. But I need to warn everybody right now. Don't come in my office with another one of these until you've solved a management problem. Don't even come in my office, because I'm not going to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, and I appreciate those opinions and those positions. I might suggest, and might motion, to just lay this over one week, because we are getting a briefing, the Public Works Committee, on this particular issue that we asked folks to look into. And I hope to be impressed about it, but I don't know that yet. Because I think it is time for us to address this issue that we've heard of for seven months now. And it's had the exact same conversation we had seven months ago. And that may, at that point, we may choose to move forward, and maybe we will. It sounds like we probably will. But I'd like to know that information before I vote. And I don't think one week's going to make any difference on this contract. So I would move to lay it over one week.
Second. Before we call for the vote, I would add just a few of my own comments. Mr. Pauls, last month, you had data provided you by Human Resources on the number of positions we were short on AEO ones, did you not?
Right. That has to go on down, because they just, I think on the 25th of September, they hired another eight.
Right, so we were 33... We were 33 short, and then they hired eight. And so we're down to, that would be 25, wouldn't it?
Well, but there's been some movement around. So those numbers probably are moving.
But whether it's a few plus or a few minus, the point is this. I find it rather odd that the number of people to be staffed would be roughly equivalent to what we're short in this contract. So this company has 26 to do the work of more or less the number of AEOs, plus or minus a few, that the city is operating shorthanded right now. One thing that we did in our Human Resources Committee is told the acting director that, you know, we would be patient, because she was basically coming in to help the city out in its position of being short a director. And she assured us that they would get through these questionnaires and surveys as soon as they could, and hope to report back in a month or two. Was that more or less right, Mr. Pauls and Mr. Gray? And I'm told now by the mayor that she has someone in mind for the director's position. And I don't know if that's been announced yet, so I don't want to say anything in that regard. But I do know this. As Councilmember Festerson said, we've been talking about this issue for six months. And the question was posed, do we have an employee shortage problem in terms of hiring? Or do we have a retention problem? I think we have another problem potentially to ask. Do we have a denial problem? Because from what we heard in the committee, from the outgoing director, leads me to believe, we don't even know, from what we've heard, that the department fully understands and appreciates the gravity of the situation in retention for people who are coming in en masse and leaving, and not necessarily leaving the city, but desperate to get out of the department to go to another department in the city, where they don't have those managerial issues. And if there is a hiring shortage and hiring problem, I think it's incumbent upon the employer to do everything they can to keep the people they have, that they've invested so much in. And that includes looking into, if you're hearing from so many people about common issues in one little area of the department, you know, Houston, maybe we do have a problem here that we need to look into. So I said when we came to this spring with the potholes, I just couldn't vote for that, knowing that the city hadn't taken the efforts, because we were told at the time that it was primarily a hiring problem. And I said, "I can't perpetuate this in good conscience, because we know we have a problem. We know we're short." And on the council agenda that day, we weren't even advertising. Now, I didn't pull up the website today, because I've been, unlike six months ago, I wasn't running the meeting. So I had that luxury of that time. I don't have that luxury right now, as I'm trying to balance all this of doing the people's business here. But I also know this. If we don't seal the roads like weren't done last fall in several streets in my district, and perhaps others have noticed this, and maybe you're studying to get the same kind of complaints that I am, is it the middle of the road, or the seams, we'll call it, of where, when they resurfaced, the machine went down, and then had to come back and do the next row? And where those seams met is where they crack seal right after we do the roads. And then, hopefully seasonally, they get done by our crews. And if you don't, they tend to get the water in them, and they tend to break apart. And next thing we know, we have these little gullies in the middle of our asphalt streets, like we have on Center Street in the 50s block, like we do on Park Avenue, just at the corner of Park Avenue and Woolworth, by the housing towers. And I could go on and on and on about these different streets that have these now gaps that have formed in them, that are dangerous for cars, they're dangerous for bicyclists. And it's because we didn't even crack seal last fall. How many of you got the email from the former Public Works Director saying, "We should be out there crack sealing"? This was last year, not this year. So, to me, I think I want to maintain consistency. I want to make sure the department knows, we've already waited too long to have these problems addressed. And I want the public to know that while I'm going to be patient with the new director in getting to the bottom of things, I want to remind everyone, like I have the mayor, that this council has its own investigatory authority under the city charter. And if we need to use it to get to the bottom of what's going on in this department, rest assured, we will. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just say, I'm not going to support the layover. And again, the reason is, we're not going to solve the unemployment issue, or the unemployment hiring practices, or retention practices, or the management issues in a week's time. I think the information that Mr. Fitzer has presented to us today is certainly gives the gravity of the situation, that we need to do this work. And again, I'm not willing to not do the work at the potential of making our streets in even worse condition. And I'm not here to say that I don't, I'm not saying that there may or may not be a management issue. But, I mean, as it relates to employment, I mean, you talk to David Brown at the Chamber, or any of the major employers around the city of Omaha, and I don't care if you're looking for entry-level positions, or middle-management positions, or executive positions, there are more jobs than there are people to fill jobs. And we have, that unemployment rate, or the percentage, is a double-edged sword. It's great to tout that we have low unemployment, we have opportunities. But the flip side of that is, we don't have the people to fill those positions. So again, I'm trying to bring this, in my mind, I'm trying to bring this back to what I think the issue is here today. And the issue is, we need to crack seal our streets in order to help maintain the best possible situation to keep the streets in the best condition that we can. And I appreciate Mr. Fitzer and Public Works, and the process that they're going through to accomplish that.
Is that it? Thank you, Mr. Harding. Mr. Gray.
Yeah, I just think where I am is, I think I've stated pretty clearly where I'm at on this issue. I'm not going to, yeah, I did second it. Doesn't mean I'll vote for it, but I did second it so that Mr. Festerson could have his vote. But the point that needs to be made here, at least as far as I'm concerned, we see the problem as unemployment, the unemployment is so low, and we're not seeing a lot of people. I'm not hearing that from them. What I'm hearing from them is, we got a retention problem. I'm not hearing that we're having a hiring problem. Are we having a hiring problem? Do you guys believe that we're having a hiring problem? Or are we having a retention problem?
Tony Burghalter. I believe we're having a retention problem. And this is created over the past four years, I would say. So you had individuals who have previously worked here 20 years, leave the city, go to other places, walk out at 52, 55, to go to Union Pacific or MUD. We just lost two of our great MR2s just last week to go to MUD. Not because of the money, because they know when they go to MUD, they're going to be owned. They're going to work long hours. It's not for that, it's because of the management over here at the city of Omaha. So, it's a retention problem.
And that's what I've, I've heard over and over again from various staff members, from various employees, a number of council members, that we have a management problem. And I would suggest that after next week, when the Public Works Committee meets, Mr. President, I would be glad to hear your thoughts about the potential of putting together our own investigation, if we can't seem to get this done.
Well, that's the Public Works Committee with Mr. Palermo and...
Mr. Palermo?
Pauls and Festerson, I believe.
Okay. And, okay. I would be interested in your thoughts about conducting our own investigation and getting to the bottom of this. Because six months to address a management problem, that doesn't happen in private industry. They deal with management problems right away. We need to do the same thing. We, six months or longer that this has been going on, it, it needs to stop.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
I know we'll get to a vote eventually, but I know Mr. Kratz isn't here today, but I see Mr. Indabash sitting in the chair for a lot today. I'll ask Bernard if he could try to answer this on behalf of the director of that department, or city attorney. Do we have a, do we have a retention or a management issue in the law department?
I wouldn't say we have a hiring, retention, or management issue in the law department, but we've, I mean, obviously...
Have we lost some attorneys lately?
We've had attorneys leave and we've replaced them.
Okay. So, Mr. Curtis, earlier today in a Finance Committee meeting, you, you're telling us about a number of people who've, who are no longer employed by, in the Finance Department. Do we have a management issue in the Finance Department?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, no.
Okay. I know I'm oversimplifying the issue, but again, it, hiring and retention are issues with citywide, with all employers of small businesses, large businesses. And again, that's not what the issue is that we're voting on today. We're voting on crack sealing the streets, so...
And I would just add, I would be surprised if the Public Works Committee has any answers next week, because the HR director and staff won't, won't have had the time to get through enough of the surveys, in all likelihood, by next week. But Godspeed to you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Okay, and this is a vote for the layover?
Yeah, this is a motion to lay over one week.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion pa, or failed three to four.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Very reluctantly, yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed, six to one. Item 28, in ordinance to amend the Omaha Municipal Code to regulate the city's processing of applications for the deployment of small wireless facilities by telecommunications companies. A is amendment of the whole requested by the law department.
Is there a motion? The amendment of the whole? Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed, six to one. Non-action items, items 29 through 46 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:53.